Board to order. May I have a roll call?
Figueroa?
Here.
Goodrich?
Here.
Hayde? Kovak? Lewis?
Here.
Radzinski?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
We have a call. Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law. Judge, please read our Fenton mission, beliefs, and bison way statements.
Fenton mission statements to cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Fenton belief statements, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotion learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The bison way, students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Karen, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do. We have one.
As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limit this evening of 30 minutes total. As a reminder, it is recommended to address staff members and students by title and not by name to protect their privacy.
Larry Anzalone?
Good evening. My name's Larry Anzalone. I am an employee of Fenton High School, but more importantly, a tax-paying resident of Benserville. I attended last month's board meeting because I have many concerns about the leadership of Fenton High School and the direction we are heading. I gave the board my personal information and asked the board members to contact me because three minutes is not enough time to express my concerns. So far, no board member has reached out to me. There are several employees at Fenton who are also residents of Benserville and/or Wooddale that would be willing to talk to the board and express some of their troubling concerns if the board was willing to ask. I believe that talking to your constituents is an invaluable source of information. I also believe that that information will be unfiltered, more honest, and accurate than which might come from this administration. So again, I am asking my elected officials to reach out to me and hear my concerns. Thank you, and I appreciate this board's sacrifice of their valuable time. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you for your public comments. Board, I would like to revise the agenda and make a recommendation to move closed session immediately after the District 100 informational items. May I have a motion in a second?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
We're going to go to close session.
I repeated. We are, I made a motion to move closed session to directly after informational items.
Goodrich? Lewis?
Yes.
Motion passed. Next item, the informational items, James?
Sure. Welcome, everyone. Our first agenda item is our Fenton Class of 2023 graduation profile. This annual report gives us a glimpse into the exciting future plans of our talented graduates from last year, the Class of 2023. And who better to walk us through it, this inspiring profile, than our very own Assistant Principal, Dr. Eric Coranda? Let's hear all about the remarkable achievements and bright futures of our graduates from the Class of 2023. Take it away, Dr. Coranda.
Thank you, and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you on this. Normally, we have this data in the fall. There was a delay through the National Clearinghouse, so we were able to get it in the winter. Rachel Georgeakis, our college and career counselor, works a lot on this report. The report is a couple of different parts to it. It is, we talked to the seniors in May, and it's a voluntary survey of what their future plans are. We asked them a number of questions, so they self-report a lot of that information to us. We then take that information, assess it, and then in the fall, through the National Student Clearinghouse, which is an organization that kind of runs student data, about 3,500 universities, colleges participate in it, they then are able to give data back to us, and we are able to see where did our students actually go. And there's some limitations to the data, but there's also a lot of insights in it. So as we talk through the data that is in the packet, that's what we're looking at. So again, the students self-report, and then we verify a number of things through the Clearinghouse. So we had 323 seniors last year, the Class of 2023, fill the survey out. And the percentages you see under the 323 heading are what they told us they were planning on doing at the time of the survey, which was last May. Thirty-seven percent wanted to attend, said they were going to attend a four-year college, 41% community college. And then that reports back to us from the Clearinghouse. All the rest of the items, we do not get that information back. So once they tell us that, we have no way of following up necessarily unless the student tells us that directly. So those who attend a trade school, go into an apprenticeship, the military, and are, you know, going to go on undecided or something else. So according to the Clearinghouse report we got now, 37% of our students said they were going to attend a four-year college or university. We know of 32% that did. And then for the community college two-year, we know of 26% that did. There are some schools, again, that don't report this information to the Clearinghouse. It's limited, but there are some. This also does not account for a student perhaps who said they were going to do something. They're off for a year, they might be working, they might be doing other things, and they're going to go next year. So we'll get more data later, but for right now, this was just purely the fall information for enrollment. If a student started, for example, this spring, we don't have that information either. So we do see a drop in that two-year. That seems awfully significant. What we also don't know is maybe they said two-year institution and went to a trade school, so we won't know that. So there are some pieces there to that within the data, but we know a lot of our students, 323 of them, that were, you know, that did the survey and were graduating, said they were going on to do something post-secondary. Six percent undecided and 1% other, and then 7% working. So the vast majority said they were going on to something immediately after high school. Those who said they're undecided or beginning work and not attend school may change their mind or get into something along the way in a trade and so on, but we don't have a way to track that data. But what we do have is the four and two-year. The next piece of this is what did they say they were going to do? And so the diagram, the vast majority said, you know, engineering, nursing, business. Many said undecided and weren't quite sure. A lot of them said they wanted to be teachers, they wanted to go into computer science, you know, looking at different types of degrees to go into those professions. So they outlined 128 different programs that they're currently participating in, which is the data we got back from the Clearinghouse. So we know of the students we know of. They're in 128 different programs, and they're at 44 different colleges and universities. The largest percentage are at COD, Elmhurst, University of Illinois at Chicago, and then also down at Urbana-Champaign. The university in the packet that you, the report that you have, the eight-pager, it is set up where we also then break that down by the school that they came from to us, Blackhawk and Wooddale. So we are also able to see those students, and we can report that information back to them as well. Where did your students go, you know, when they are coming through? So we are able to gain a lot of that information from the report. The applicants themselves, so the 323 who gave us this information, and that said they were going on to college, 71% said that they are a first-generation college student of that 323. And then for those that are attending college, 66% said they would stay at home, 26% on campus, and then 7% would live off-campus but not with a family member. And again, this is all self-reported from the students. The financial aid, we are able to get a lot more detailed information on that because via the Clearinghouse, all the universities and colleges report specific financial aid information to the Clearinghouse. So 38% of the students who said they were going to continue on earned a scholarship, and they self-reported the $1.3 million number to us. There may have been more after that that came, you know, with other things they were doing, but it's a significant number for our students who are going on, you know, into other things in higher education. Seventy-seven percent of our graduates filed the FAFSA or the Alternative Education so that they can get into financial aid and start looking at that. And because they did that, we are able, through the Clearinghouse, to get a lot more detailed financial aid information about what the colleges and universities are doing with them while they're there. Fifty-five percent of the students qualify for a Pell Grant that's based on extreme financial need, and so there, you have to do a lot of work through the financial aid application when you're applying to be able to know whether or not you qualify for these things. And so the federal government through the FAFSA, and then Illinois through the Assistance Commission, ISAC is the name of that group, also works directly with the students and their families. Forty-seven percent qualify for an Illinois MAP grant, which also, because of ISAC, so our students are qualifying for a lot of assistance. And then we're able, down the road, to find out exactly who qualified for what. I think the Pell Grant's around $7,400, you know, for the year as a maximum, and they use that with a formula to see how much a student and the family would qualify for. So the nice thing about the senior profile report is it takes some time, like it did this year. We're pretty far off from where we started in May and even the fall, but we do get a lot of detailed information so that we can then tailor our service delivery in our department towards what, you know, students and families may need. And then 55% of students who filed the applications also report being selected for verification. And the verification process is sometimes the federal government wants to verify, they might find an error in some numbers that doesn't match to the IRS information that is sent, and so on. So they go back and they verify. This happens quite commonly, or if another type of mistake was made or something. So we're able to know how many students also have to verify what they did, which also helps us to understand what we need to do to assist. And this year, the FAFSA form was changed pretty significantly to make it easier, but it's also tying information items in together. And then finally, our trends and plans for future data in the analysis. So from the Clearinghouse data, you know, we're able to go back about seven years or so. The 2020 is a bit of anomaly because we didn't get as much data there with the pandemic, but our fall enrollment immediately after high school, in each of those years, there's a 10 to four-year and a 10 to two-year. So those are the actual enrollments that we know of for our students. These don't have a decimal in them, but in talking with Mr. Georgeakis in looking at our trends, this follows basically the national. We were able to look at that and see where that goes, but also, there is a very slight increase this year in attending the institutions of about 0.8%. That's not reflected here without the 0.8, but there is a very, very slight increase. But again, it's, it kind of ebbs and flows, but it's slowly going back up just a tiny bit. The future data collection we're looking at, we're able to take from the Clearinghouse and break everything down by demographics and all sorts of other information. So we're talking about what else we can do with this report to help better serve the needs of our students and their families and see where we need to kind of target some of our delivery with the things that we do. Future events coming up that will also help with this. We have a FAFSA night next Tuesday where we invite families in to get assistance. ISAC comes here with us from the state, and they help our families. We had one of these about a month ago. We had a lot of families come through, which was helpful. We have 28 colleges coming, I think it's March 14th at lunchtime, to be in the cafeteria with our students. We have a college night in April that we invite families to, and some colleges and former students come out and they talk through what the, how to apply, what the experience is like, and so on. So we have a number of events also coming up, and we do a lot of these items in the evenings and then directly connected to parents and so on through Mrs. Georgeakis and her office, and the amount of tremendous amount of work she does, as well as the counselors with the students. In two weeks, we'll be in all the classrooms doing college application experience with juniors, we're going in with the sophomores, and so on. So we do a lot with this throughout the spring as well, because we want to make sure students have a seamless transition to that, and it's a process that can be very cumbersome, but we want to kind of take the edge off of that when we're working with our students. So I know it's a very quick summary of some data, but, you know, we use it a lot, and we want to start digging down deeper into it to see what our other needs are so that we can, you know, again, better deliver our service to them and see what our families need and kind of talk with them a lot with what their needs are as well. And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Mr. Coranda. Dr. Coranda, any questions from the board? We get this every year. I know District Two and District Seven are very, always excited when they receive this report, so therefore they know what Blackhawk, where Blackhawk students are attending, as well as Wooddale Middle School. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next topic, DEI. Embracing diversity, equity, inclusion, DEI is a cornerstone of our strategic plan here at Fenton. It is our commitment to fostering an inclusive and supportive environment for our students and families. This evening, Mr. Lorenzo Rubio will present a DEI report highlighting our progress and initiatives in the strategic plan theme. Take it away, Mr. Rubio.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again tonight. It's a pleasure to see everybody again and report on some of the exciting things that we've been doing relating to diversity, equity, and inclusion. As you know, I'm relatively new to this role, but I've been so excited and energized to take it on. DEI, I think, is just an extension of my role at the school anyway, multilingual division leader, right? A background in EL. To me, I came into education to teach kids learning language because I think that's about accessibility. I think school should be for every kid, regardless of where you come from, regardless of the language you speak, what you look like. And this work that I, that we've been undertaking now as a team is just that, right? Not language specifically, but everything else, and it's been a lot of fun to get in and do it. And so I'd like to start with this, to highlight this night. You see a picture of two board members up there, Mr. Lewis and Ms. Hayde, who's not here, with their senior kids, right? And that's really what it's all about. We put on a very successful first-ever Evening of Black Excellence, the first time we've ever done it at Fenton High School. A collaboration between board members, administration, teachers, and students, really, a lot of it coming from students themselves. So why did we do something like this? You know, we say that Fenton is a diverse place, and it is often, but within that diversity, we know the data, right? It's, we're a heavily Latino school. Who gets lost within that diversity? What does it feel like to be a black student at Fenton High School in 2024? We have about, the data shows in Power School, we have about 40-ish African-American students at our school. Do they feel like they get lost in the shuffle? They need a day, they need events, they need a night that is of, that is, they have ownership of, right? That's their night that they design, that they get to dictate. And it was really important for our team to have role models within our own community there, and we're so grateful to Mr. Lewis and Ms. Hayde for stepping up and being those role models within the community for our students on that night, along with other important invited guests. So this is all an extension of the plan. You can look at it from the outside and say, like, that was a nice dinner and a nice event. Everybody seemed happy, but it goes deeper than that. Events like this is what makes kids feel like they belong at Fenton High School in a real way, right? If there's ever anything that happens that makes them feel unwelcome, they can always reference point to this and say, like, but, but they put on that night for us, right? And that was, that was a big deal. So I look forward to more events like this in the future, and I'm energized that we can do that. But you can see the pictures from the night. Many of you were there, so it was, it was really, really cool. We had a little bit of everything, food, music, a great performance from the choir, who's just right now over there in the auditorium, right? Our kids read some poetry. We had interpretive dance. We had delicious food. It was a little bit of everything, so a great, great first event. There, you see some more pictures right there. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say, thank our, even though they're not here, our two guest speakers, Ms. Michelle McClendon and Judge Chantel Porter, of course, who, we had two outstanding guest speakers on the night. So that was a great start. We look forward to making it happen again next year with this year one as a template. To get into the DEI report continued, so that's an event that is very student and community-facing, but turning inward now, the Delt plan, as James mentioned, is a foundation of what we're trying to do here. And so I've had the task of getting to know the Delt team, kind of running it now, meeting with all five of the strands and seeing where each of the strands are. And so I'm excited to say that we're gonna, we're gonna ramp up the movement here with the Delt team. I've been calling it a reset. That doesn't mean that we're starting over. It means that in April, we're inviting back Dr. Yvette Dubiel, who we've been working with very closely for many, many years, back to Fenton, and we're gonna invite the strand leaders to have a short meeting where we're gonna talk about where we've been, where we are now, and where we need to go. And I think that that's very important now that I'm, now that we've kind of changed leadership in terms of the Delt team. So that, I'm looking forward to that in April. Again, I'm saying reset, but it doesn't mean we're starting over. We're just kind of reaffirming our commitment to it. And then in May, we're gonna have a full Delt team meeting before school is let out, just so we have all members involved and sure, make sure we're all on the same page. We've got some other trainings lined up. We continue to emphasize that DEI is at the heart of everything we do, and so it's very important to us that, you know, any employee at Fenton High School goes through our DEI training. Support staff will have that day on April 19th, and we've got a plan figured out for external, for our athletics coaches as well, as well as some different and targeted admin PD on DEI. It'll end the year as well in May. So that's what we're doing, basically. We've got another meeting set up with the Diversity Committee to do, to plan further events, like the Evening of Black Excellence to end the year, so you're gonna have a lot more fun events like that happening and that you'll hear about. But internally, we've also got this on the horizon, and we're excited to get it going again. So that's, that's all I have for you. I don't know if there's any questions.
I have one small question, actually. So, you know, you talk about the reset, that we're delving more into this. How are you kind of putting together, I don't want to say a report card, but like an assessment, like where we are, right? Are we 10% where we want to be, 20%, 50%? How are you assessing the effectiveness of these changes, but also where are we kind of in that process? Have you equipped that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So actually, within the Delt structure, accountability is built, is built within it, and this was all developed years ago before I arrived with the help of Dr. Dubiel. And what it seems like is it's a good structure. So basically, each strand, all five of the strands, if you look at our document, has very focused, specific goals that are kind of easily tracked. And throughout the year at different times, we actually just did it a few weeks ago, the strand leaders come together and make sure, all right, where are we at with this goal? And there's actually a percentage that we give to each goal. So as of now, I could share a document with you right after this meeting that says where we are percentage-wise across each of the very specific goals that each strand has. So because it was built so, like, intelligently in that way, to be able, with accountability at the forefront, that's always gonna be a part of the plan. And so when we hit the reset, we're basically gonna relook at our goals again. We're gonna see the percentages, where we are, and then we're gonna have a conversation about, all right, it's been a few years with these goals. Are we good with these goals? Should we continue forward? Do we need to add one? Do we need to remove one? Where are we at? And then, and then begin to move forward. That's kind of what we're looking at. And to say, like, a percentage, you have to kind of look at each strand because they're kind of all over the place. There are some goals that are just ongoing forever, you know, like hiring practices within the system strand. That's something that is, is ongoing. I don't know if you ever hit 100%.
Sounds great. Really, really pleased to hear that we've got that. So, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Rubio.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to stress out to the board that how wonderful it is to see our building administrators here to share with you their work, Mr. Rubio, Dr. Coranda, helping our students thrive here at Fenton. In a minute, not so, not a school board administrators will be Bruce in regards to the next topic, which is food service. As per Illinois regulations, school districts are mandated to bid every five years for the management of food services programs. In line with this requirement, Fenton will be initiating the bidding process in March for these services. Bruce will provide an overview of this process. Bruce?
Thank you, Mr. Antango. And really, what mandates that is the, is the requirement of a federal program that we participate in. So this program falls into the National School Lunch Program, and so we serve lunches, we serve breakfast, we serve summer school meals. When BCC was in place, we shared snacks. If that comes back again, we're prepared to, that it's included in our bid, will be included in our bid, so if that reignites, and we hope it will. As Mr. Antango said, every five years, so it's the initial year, and then four renewals. So each year is a renewal with the Food Service Management Company. We do contract that out. We've got the last contractor we've had. We bid this out five years ago. They are very interested in continuing to stay here. We will send the bid out to no less than five companies, and that is required, but we would do that otherwise anyhow, just to get some competition and hopefully the most favorable pricing. We will, it'll be published in the newspaper. We hope to bring a recommendation to you no later than May, possibly April, but the process really will pick up next month when it goes out to bid. They come in for a pre-bid meeting. The bid actually is due, I think, April 15th, so it'd be a pretty quick turnaround for the April board meeting, so we're probably looking more at May, but we'll see how things go. The other thing we're seriously considering is enrolling in the CEP program, and this is separate from the bid, but just to kind of give you some insight into what we're thinking about for next year. And that's, what that is, is this Community Eligibility Program, another federal program. And it's really an alternative to collecting applications, verifying applications, having households fill those out every year, where they would take, there's a formula, and then, of course, the driver is if you have a very high free and reduced count, which is what we, we're over 50, 55% or more and growing. So it's really intended for high-poverty school districts, students that are, fall into that bucket, I guess, if you will. So we're looking at that, and that would be basically a free meal, breakfast, and lunch for students universally. So we'll confirm the calculations and see if it's something that we can do and offer and not have to subsidize the program with local dollars. So that's our objective. Board will certainly be kept aware of what we're doing there or what we're going to recommend, and we'll bring that to you, but just wanted to give you a preview of that. So no action tonight, just information, the bid process, and then what we may look at for next year going forward in this CEP program, which I believe is a five-year commitment, I believe it is, once you enroll in that. So that's kind of where we're at tonight. So any questions? Be happy to answer. Yes, sir?
Because I, you know, we talked about food services like back in May or something, and we did like three months later, and this is processed, take a year, or is it something that we have to reset someplace?
Yeah, no, the, great question. You know, part of what we, why we kept bringing it to board last time was, it all had to do with COVID and the rising prices in food services. So our contract was limited by how much they could increase it, and I believe it was a 3% increase. Their food costs were skyrocketing over 10%. So they asked for the management company, and the state board authorized this to happen, an increase beyond what the contract allowed for. So that's, we had to ask the board for that authorization to do that, so we did bring it to the board. The board approved it.
So it had nothing to do with recent?
No, that was just to do with the cert, yeah.
A Band-Aid for the current food service?
Yes.
Financial Band-Aid, so.
You could say that, yes. Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Our next topic is the Building Automation System, or BAS. This important automation system serves to connect and streamline various functions within the building, including- within the building, including lighting, HVAC, which stands for Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning. We are thrilled to propose this installation of a new BAS system this summer, a move aimed at enhancing the learning environment for our students. With improved airflow, heating, and air conditioning, and light quality in their learning spaces, we are ensuring our students thrive in a more conducive and inspiring learning environment. Mr. Martin will present more information.
Yeah, it's hard to top that. But the, yeah, we are looking at that. Mr. Kobel is thrilled. We have three different independent systems that are not all that reliable. It's antiquated system, parts are difficult to come by, expensive to repair, that type of thing. So we're kind of on borrowed time. So we did go out to bid. We worked with our contractor, our consultants with STR, and the engineer, and went out to bid. We did receive three bids. They fell within the budget what they thought it would be, actually a little bit less than budget anticipated. So we're happy about that. It'll be at least a year project, so they would start this summer, but it'll take some time. There's a couple of different phases to it. The one good thing is that we did build in an alternate into the program too, into the bid, which covers the STEM wing. So when that comes online, this will be a part of that job as well, this project. So we did have STR vet the contractor. They've worked with them in the past. They're recommending that we award it to the Interactive Building Systems, which is a local company. But that's kind of where we're at tonight with the BAS building upgrade. This is kind of just an informational item at this point. And then later on tonight, we'll ask the board to act on an action item to approve and award the bid for the controls of this system.
Can I call another conversation? That we had about this? Is this, the system is being replaced as the one that's using like 10-year-old software or something like that?
It might be even a little bit older than that, but yes, it's, it's...
And it's not, you can't connect it all? You have to run around and do manual?
Yeah, none of them talk. We have three different systems, and none of them are coordinated or compatible. And this would address that issue. It would be one comprehensive system that would handle our HVAC.
Do we get new HVAC equipment out of this, or is it just a bunch of wiring and technology?
It's more of the control aspect of it. We have replaced HVAC equipment over the past couple of years with Acer dollars, some things, as we move along. But this would just be for the controlling of those.
Just, this is for computer stuff mostly?
Heating, ventilation. We don't do lighting now. We could add lighting onto that as well. But there are other things that this has the capacity to do.
Okay, last question. This alternate, alternate bid number one, I think it was for 226. Is that an option, or are we committed to that if we approve this thing?
Well, yeah, it was bid as a base bid in the alternate. So the alternate was designed just to be for the STEM wing.
But here's...
But their pricing would be held for, until that job is over with.
No, no, okay, alright. Let me ask the question. So the base bid is for this?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Then the alternate bid is for the new construction? But if we approve this as-is, then we're committed to the whole 896,000? And the alternate bid is not an option, but now it's built in?
If the board approves it, that would be true, yes.
Good.
Is there an estimated lifespan for this new system? And how adaptable is it? What may come with the referendum passes?
Well, the nice thing about this system, and this is by design, we didn't want a proprietary system. So the parts are, you know, we can buy them and put them in. We don't have to have a specific contractor. We don't have to have a specific part. Obviously, the part has to fit the application, but it's not tied to a specific manufacturer.
So this thing's not proprietary? We could go buy something off the shelf? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, basically, yes, yeah. Which is, I'm glad you asked that question, but yes. So that was a critical point. Because there's a lot of things in systems, fire alarm systems, that are proprietary that you're kind of stuck, and for life, basically. But as far as the lifespan, you know, we would expect to get a minimum of 15 years out of this system. And obviously, you know, that maintenance plays into that as well. But yeah, that's what we would hope to get. How long would improve deficiency?
Do you have a question?
What sort of security audits and technology audits have been performed on the system that we're looking to purchase? Are there any certifications, especially in light of the current, you know, IT climate with ransomware attacks and things to that nature? We're talking about systems that need operating systems that haven't been updated by their manufacturer in over a decade? Are we back into a system where we require Windows or non-open-source software in order to be able to run and operate it?
Yeah, right now, we're kind of vulnerable, quite honestly. And Dr. Batson, he's chomping at the bit here to chime into this, but this would be a far more stable system.
Just a real quick comment on that. A lot of it is, it's, the network is just completely independent network. It's not connected to the internet. It's not vulnerable to outside attacks or anything. There's a very specific strict access way that they can get into it from off-site. So it really shelters our and other systems from this system. And uses a lot of, even though it might use some standard operating systems under the covers, it uses some proprietary interfaces and stuff. So really, it should be as, you know, safe and secure as it can be. Because it's really, none of this stuff, I mean, we have some BAS equipment now, but it's just completely independent cabling, completely independent infrastructure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Next up is E-Rate Funded Technology. Dr. Batson will provide an overview of the E-Rate program, which is a federal funding resource specifically designed to assist schools in covering the costs associated with internet access. This program operates as a reimbursement grant, with the amount reimbursed to the district based on percentage of students eligible for free and reduced lunch. Currently, our district benefits from an 80% reimbursement for a range of internet and network hardware and service. Dr. Patson will walk us through the details and benefits of this program.
Thank you, I'm back. Real quickly, E-Rate is a program that's been around quite a while. It's a federally funded program, and it supports libraries and public schools, and actually, some private schools as well. It's run by the Universal Service Administrative Corporation, which is a federal organization that really handles the operations of a lot of funding sources for a lot of programs nationwide. It provides discounts. It's actually a matching, if you will, method of paying for network services, internet services. They say it's a discounted reimbursement. We have a choice of whether they discount the bill, and the company that's serving us gets reimbursed on a monthly basis, or whether we just wait and get a reimbursement check at the end of the year, and we deposit that. So we have that option. And it's based on the National School Lunch Program, the free and reduced lunch percentages. And actually, in the last year, because our percentages inched up, we're now at an 80% discount rate. So for every $100 we spend on these things, we get $80 reimbursed to us, which is a huge benefit for our district. Two categories. The original category, category one, was simply to get internet into schools. Again, this program's been around for decades. And at one point in time, it was very difficult to get internet into all the schools. There's still some schools that struggle with this. But for the most part, this assists us getting really good quality internet into our buildings. And then category two is a newer program that's been around about 10 years. It provides for internet connections. And what that means is it's the infrastructure to bring that internet and distribute that internet within the building. So what does this mean for us? Based on our free and reduced percent, as I said, we get an 80% discount on these reimbursements. What that means is category one, our internet service is supplemented by an 80% reimbursement. There's no real spending cap on that, but we have to bid through their process. We currently save about $20,000 a year because of this. So I think when I first got here, we were in the $13,000 to $15,000 range. So it's substantial amounts of money over the last so many years. Category two is administered a little different, and you'll see the reason why we're discussing this a little later tonight. It provides funding for equipment and infrastructure on a five-year rolling basis. So every five years, we get another allotment of funds. This is a cap based on the number of students in our building. And we have five years to spend that allotment. And again, it's 80% match on everything that we purchase. When I first arrived at Fenton, we had a pretty aging infrastructure. It was, to be honest with you, it was pretty bad. We, in the first 18 to 24 months that I was here, we basically replaced all the infrastructure. That saved us, this program alone saved us about $250,000 at that point in time. And we're looking towards this year and next year to basically redo that process, because those things are now seven, eight years old, due for replacement. So we'll be spending, we'll be saving another approximately quarter million dollars. So all in all, we've probably reached the $700,000-plus dollar mark in savings because of this program over the last six or seven years. What is, again, what does it mean? So directly, it pays, category one pays for internet. You may remember, we signed a contract, you voted on a new contract with Comcast. We switched to Comcast over the summer. That's a three-year contract, again, at 80%. Category two, which is really why I'm discussing this and reminding you of what E-Rate's all about. Tonight, we're recommending the purchase of replacement access points, basically the wireless network in our building. It's now approaching seven years old, and the technology has improved and, you know, bypassed many of the things that were around at that point in time. So our first of the category two purchases that we're recommending buying is our wireless. We normally would have put this off another, let you know about it, and then ask you next month. But our goal is to try to get that wireless network upgraded over spring break. And so in order to get that in time, we're asking for your approval on that tonight. It was budgeted, so theoretically, you've already seen these dollars in the budget that was outlined for this year, for the FY24 budget. Next month, there's another bid now out on the street for our district firewalls. And this will help us take advantage of the higher-speed internet services that come into our building. Again, the 20% of that's been budgeted in our budget. We'll get 80% discount on this. We're looking forward to the responses to those bids coming up in the next few weeks. And we'll prepare that for your approval, recommendation for your approval next month. And then the rest, the remainder of that, approximately $250,000 that we'll have to use from this program, will happen next year. Next year around this time, Brittany will probably be up here talking to you about this and recommending replacing the switching infrastructure, which is the actual network infrastructure within the building that distributes the network around the building. That will both cover this building, and at that point in time, we'll have enough information that we'll probably add on to that whatever is needed for the STEM wing, because we have nothing there, obviously, and be able to use this funding, this 80% funding mechanism to help offset some of the costs of the network for even the new building. Those monies will be included in the technology budget for next year, so that will be all taken care of then. So that's E-Rate, that's what our plans are. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
If I heard you correctly, this stuff is already in the budget, yes?
The first two items there are in the FY24 budget, and then we're planning to put the items for next year in the FY25 budget.
The budget, yes.
Yes.
Well, that's already been approved, and then we're asking to approve it again?
Well, there's a couple of reasons for that. One is because it's such a large number, because the actual purchase price is about $125,000, as you'll see later in the evening for approval, of which we'll get 80% of that back. But the other reason is because it was a bid process. It's like we go through a bid process for the construction. And even though you approve the construction of the thing, we have to approve the bids as they come in. So it's a requirement for you to approve that bid.
Alright, I got another question. This thing says it's all-in, it's $125,555. And that's just for the tonight one?
For the tonight one, yes.
We're gonna get 80% of that back?
Yes.
That's about $100,000. Do you have it? And you said we're gonna get 80% for the next two steps?
For all of that, yes, yeah. The one next month, we don't have the bids in yet, but it's somewhat less than that. It won't be $120,000, it'll be more like $50,000 or something like that.
It's difficult to me to have a total project, because this is like getting bits and pieces.
Well, these are individual projects, they're not one thing. So we replace this equipment as needed. It just so happens to have the same funding mechanism. And so each time we do this, we have to go through a very stringent bid process through the E-Rate process. It goes, you know, it's bid publicly, nationally, and we have to accept the bids, open the bids, go through, you know, review them and rank them. So they, you know, technically, they're all independent projects.
Oh, yeah, because that's part of it, I didn't know if they were interlinked?
No, no, not really. And typically, you wouldn't want, the issue, and this is about the same sequence that we replace these in the past. You can't afford to do everything all at once. You know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. You'd rather spread it out over a period of time. So we're spreading these out over a couple of years to soften the blow a little bit, even though we're getting 80% now. Anything else?
Are we expecting the total cost of all three to be greater than $300,000 before the 80%?
Yes, yeah. The third one will be a much larger, because it's all our switches. And as you know, there's a lot of them in a building this size. So that will be the largest of the group. But it should be, you know, we'll get about a quarter million in matching, and we'll, you know, add to that another, you know, less than $100,000, and we'll have, you know, $350,000 worth of infrastructure when it's all said and done.
Are we, are there any concerns or questions around the backbone between the different pieces of cabling? Maybe replacing any of that?
No, it was, a lot of it was replaced when this renovation was done in this core area, because we moved our server room into this part of the building. Part of the STEM wing, actually, will be to update one of the closets to feed that side of the building. And then we'll take a look as we need. We've replaced all the switches in those, and we'll be replacing them again. But the cabling, you know, is reasonably new, relatively new. And those areas that aren't, we'll address those as we replace the switches in the closets.
Sounds good, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Batson. Next up is our scoreboard update. Just a huge shout-out to Jose, Rick, and Karen for their fantastic job in regards to this initiative. This initiative is basically purchasing our scoreboard, advertisement, and brand with local businesses. They have reached out to some local businesses, and there are some promising businesses who are interested. Some of them, Torreya Groceries on Irving Park, Wingstop, Lalo's, and other several other local businesses. So we're gonna continue with this venture, and we just want to keep the momentum going. So that's a quick update there. Next item would be the referendum, okay? Before Rick steps up to give you an update regarding... Before Rick steps up to give you an update regarding the Fenton Building Referendum, let us just revisit the referendum goals, because there's oppositions to the school building referendum, and it is crucial to prevent any misrepresentation of our intentions. The crux of our building referendum isn't about boosting staff salaries. It has nothing to do with salaries. It's about enhancing and renovating our school building so our students can thrive and compete with other high school students in DuPage County. Despite two unsuccessful attempts in the past year and a half, it is imperative that we persist, because our school building urgently requires renovation and upkeep. During our initial attempt, the district proposed $129 million of renovation and expansion, which the voters didn't approve. Responding to the voters, we adjusted our proposal to $99 million, with a reduced building renovation improvement scope, so we reduced the size of our work that we were planning to do. However, this too was unsuccessful. This time around, in response to the voters, the district is proposing a $65 million referendum, further reducing the renovation scope. If approved, homeowners whose house is valued at $229,000 can expect an additional cost of approximately $222 annually, or $18.52 per month, or 62 cents per day. So if approved, where will this funds be allocated at our school? Primarily towards building upgrades, better bathrooms and plumbing, improve airflow, plumbing, emergency power, and mechanical system, enhance security measures like sprinklers in case of a fire, improve door and window monitoring, and career pathway classroom updates. So the vote will go out March 19th. There's no question, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Kambeck for the latest update on the referendum.
Just wanted to have one clarifying point.
Yes.
I see bullet number two says, or bullet number two is the, it is not to raise the salaries of our staff. Just to be clear, even though we have, you know, we went through the process of salary negotiations, and that ended up being a little bit more expensive than we anticipated, this referendum isn't to keep the building or the lights on. This is purely for repairing, doing additional things that we normally wouldn't have to do. This isn't a referendum just to say, hey, we don't have enough money over here, so we got to go get money over there. Those are two separate pots.
That's correct. That's correct. Set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this referendum has an end to life. This is not a permanent referendum that will be here forever. There's an end date for this referendum, because it's just to cover the building, and it has to be paid for. It has to be upgraded. It's a 1950's building. When we get to the core of it, the facelift that was done back in 2017-ish, when my son was here and prior, was a facelift. The core of the building has not been touched. I know we're fighting against the appearance from the outside, so it's just like, I got to throw that in again, because there's a lot of misperception, and perception becomes reality, and this isn't going to go away, and it isn't going to get cheaper, and it isn't going to get better by wishing it wasn't here.
That's right. That is accurate. That is accurate. Thank you.
Yeah, my three main objectives with this is, first, make sure people are aware that it's on the ballot. We have the right to vote, and that's an incredible right that we own, but not everybody is utilizing that right. So making sure they're aware that it's there. Second, giving them the nuts and bolts of what our proposal is, with the hopes of getting them the more detailed information. And third is getting them here to ask their own questions. So making them aware, giving them some information, and letting them ask the follow-up questions, because not everybody digests information the same way. So as we see here, these are numerous opportunities for all of the above. So these are a lot of our internal events that were already happening, people are already here, so we're making sure that they are aware it's on the ballot. Here's, we've given a presentation or flyers at each of these events, and then, hey, these are the administrators who are available to offer up a follow-up question, to answer your follow-up questions. Those are the most important components of this, because that's how we resolve the misconceptions. That's how people who see it, and they're on the fence, but then they never get around to ask the question, and they're like, ah, you know, I'm not sure. So as long as they're here, and they can see what we're talking about, and they can ask us the follow-up questions, and that thing that's got them on the fence could help them decide one way or the other, that's the best thing. Everyone should be informed in what they want in this community. So these are a lot of the things that we've done internally with current existing events. We have three mailers that have completed, I'll show you those in a moment, two in progress to invite people here, as well as give them the nuts and bolts with references of, go to our website, or stop in if you'd like to get more details.
I'd like to drill in on those mailers, by chance. We were just talking about diversity and inclusion earlier this evening. I'm hoping that those mailers are being done in multi languages, correct?
Yep, I'll show you in just a moment.
Fantastic, thank you.
Yep. So all three of these are from the incoming freshman parent night, and a huge shout-out to Mr. Lewis and Juliette, who are in attendance for most of these events, including these, making themselves available. Families that are going to be here, that would benefit from what's about to happen, got a head start to see what our building is currently like, and have the opportunity to ask us follow-up questions. And here are our, this is our first mailer. Back up for just a minute. We have one more event coming up on Saturday, that is our referendum town hall. That is included on the mailer I'm going to show you, it's on our website. Text messages, social media, and emails have gone out inviting people to attend. So in addition to our current ongoing events, we have special events for individuals to come in. So this is a mailer that came out last week. I'll be the first person to use this function, here we go. Find out more. So this is where we invite them to come in. Town Hall is March 2nd. You can scan this QR code to go to our website, where we have multiple pages with the project overview, examples, and a referendum tax calculator. And then the next one, the flipside, is in Spanish. Same thing with reference to come down here and read all of this on our website in Spanish. This is the Bensonville Municipal Newsletter. That will be coming out tomorrow or Friday, so we've given folks about a week and a half to two weeks heads up, and then this will be there two or three days heads up. For the Village of Bensonville, they rotate who is in what position in their municipal newsletter. This is our turn to be at the top, so the very first thing that you see in the mailbox, and when this sits out at Village Hall, at the Park District, in our main office, the township, so forth, is going to be Mr. O. inviting people to come to our town hall, inviting them to come to our website. And that will be sitting out in all of those locations, all the way up and through the election, which is, which is great. So it serves the purpose of getting into their home, they have to throw it away, it's not an email that goes into a junk folder, they literally have to throw it away, plus it's sitting out in the community.
Was anything done likewise for the Wooddale mailer?
Yep.
That'll be my next question.
So this is the inside of the Bensonville one. It's the same information that we had on the first mailer, so consistency, we don't want any mixed messages. And then there's your Wooddale one, right here. So that will be likewise, it's always the first of the month, sometimes they get it out a couple of days ahead of time.
Got it today. Got it today.
All right, so we're early.
Didn't get a chance to open it, though.
So that one, we're about page 16, I think, so we're a little bit in. But they have the index right on the front page, if you wanted to go to the high school. So again, big image of the map, so people can see where everything is going. The same explanation, that the priority is infrastructure and the guts of our school, and then everything else kind of builds off of that. So the yellow outlines are all of the hallways, where plumbing and sprinklers, I'm hoping we can get installed, circuit breakers and so forth. And then the classrooms would be right next to some of the biggest infrastructure, because it's efficient. Over in the culinary hallway, we've got all those circuit breakers right there. If we're going to replace those archaic circuit breakers, that's one of four walls in that culinary room that's being taken down, let's put it back up in a modern way. So same message, it's consistent, and it's hitting folks multiple times, and then inviting them to come in and see it for themselves. As Mr. O. had mentioned, the impact to homeowners, the United States Census Bureau says the average home value in District 100, so that's the small portion of Addison, Bensonville, Wooddale, and the unincorporated areas, is $229,000. That seems to be a topic of conversation, but there are a lot of condos, and condos kind of counterbalance that. So per year, it would require $4,588,000, so broken down between all the property taxpayers, $222 per year. Now again, not everybody is created equal, so if you wanted, I must have forgotten that slide as well, you can go to our website, and it has the referendum tax calculator. So you plug in your home value, and it just pops up what you would pay. And it has a very prominent disclaimer that says, go to your actual tax bill and look at what the assessor has decided that your property is worth. What you sell on the market, especially right now, is not necessarily the actual value. So what the assessor says your home is worth is what the assessor taxes you on. So that number is most likely, and especially right now, smaller than what it would be on Zillow. I know the first time we had a referendum, most people just looked up their own address on Zillow. That's very different. Plug that number in, and it'll give you what you would pay if it was approved. And we also have functions, options, that you can toggle if you're a senior citizen, because senior citizens, if they can prove their income level that's frozen, or it's, if they're only living on social security, their assessment is frozen indefinitely. So they don't even, they don't even pay the difference. You can also apply for a veteran's, a veteran's discount, as well as a disabled person, I believe that's a five-year, so that you have an opportunity to get back to your previous lifestyle. So we're trying to give all the information available, can't put every single thing in their mailbox, but we give them the nuts and bolts, QR codes, so they can scan and get to everything, or they can come in and talk to us. And if they are really busy, we're here when their kids are here, we are here when we've invited you to come in, because your kids are going to be here, and we are out and about in the community at other places that you might be to offer this information and make ourselves available to answer any questions. I believe that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Kambeck. Next up is FOIA. This month, we received one Freedom of Information Act request from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association. They requested the names and school email addresses of any certified staff members retiring this year. This FOIA request has been resolved. That is the end of our report. Mr. President.
Next item is closed session. May I have a motion and a second to go into closed session for the following? A, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C1. The appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of Fenton School District 100. B, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C2. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. C, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C8. Security procedures, school building safety and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual, a threatened, or a reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, and public or public property. D, 5 Illinois CS 120/2 C21. Discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06. So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call?
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Radzinski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Take five minutes.
Will you take five minutes?
Thank you.
Mr. President?
There was a typo on the closed session.
There was a typo on the closed session.
Motion passed.
Okay, let's wait for Mr. Dr. Batson.
I know we moved closed session up. Do we want to take a two-minute break for bathroom or anything that people need to do? Or are we good to just keep going?
Just go straight.
I think you got to open the session first.
We got to get Kate back or do we have to...
Could we do the open session motion first?
I have a motion and a second to go back into open session.
So moved.
Second.
Roque.
Figueroa. Rago.
Yes.
Kovak.
Yes.
Rzansky.
Yes.
Goodrich.
Yes.
Louis.
Okay, now what?
Open session.
So here comes Mr. Cambic as well as... Did we...
Are you ready now, Kate?
Yeah. We take too many breaks.
We take too many...
It is important to state that the Board follows school code guidelines regarding personnel. The next item is our consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego? Wait a minute. I'm so sorry. What was?
Consent agenda as presented.
We are approving the consent agenda.
Yes. Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
I would abstain.
Goodrich?
Abstain.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed.
Yes.
Our next item is discussion or action items, approval of the October 2023 IASB press policy recommendations as presented and discussed at the Policy Committee meeting held on January 24, 2024. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the October 2023 IASB press policy recommendations as presented and discussed at the Policy Committee meeting held on January 24, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
There's a lot there. It's good stuff. I think it happened. Policy men is the best.
Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2024-2025 school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Hade? Sorry. Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Next item is approval of the purchase of a 130 Maraki wireless access points and five-year hardware license fees. The purchase price for the access points is $83,785, and the five-year lease renewal is $41,470 for a total purchase of $125,255 from Heartland Business System. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the 130 Maraki wireless access points and five-year hardware license fees? The purchase price for the access points is $83,785, and the five-year lease renewal is $41,470 for a total purchase of $125,255 from Heartland Business System.
I'll make the motion.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the end-of- next-sec lease agreement for the 2024-25 school year as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Motion passed. May I have a motion that the Board of Education award the low base bid of $670,000 and an alternative bid, alternate bid number one, for $226,200 to a combined total of $896,200 to the Interactive Building Automation System? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question. Does this come, will this come out of the building fund and the bonds because it's construction stuff?
Possibly. Right now, we're planning on local funds, but if we can, well, part of it would be paid out of the debt certificates.
Okay. Roll call.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Rzynski?
Yes.
Goodrich?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes. Committee reports. Bensonville Community Foundation.
The Bensonville Community Foundation will be meeting, I believe, next month. And I want to say, I believe, don't quote me on this.
Can I ask James?
Yeah, James. We saw that the, we had an application out for $5,000 to the Bensonville Community Foundation. Now, unfortunately, I can't find my email. Was that approved?
That was not approved.
It was not approved.
This is for the Black Excellence Dinner.
That was the one for the Excellence Dinner?
Yes.
That was...
That was not approved.
But wasn't $500 approved, $500 approved?
The $5,000 was not approved. However, after Board Member Hade spoke to the President of the Bensonville Foundation, there was an agreement to donate to the Black Excellence 500, but our request for $5,000 was not approved.
Okay.
Unfortunately, we both missed the meeting due to conflicts and illness, and this came in the midway, but yeah. Well, that's something we'll need to discuss with them in the future, how this vote went out.
Right, because it was, we were asked to vote, but then we were never told.
The outcome of a vote.
I'm embarrassed to say I'm finding out now that it didn't go following that.
I think it's just a matter of, my opinion, time.
I'm pretty sure that's all it was.
Given a heads-up, a little more advanced notice, and first time around, and hopefully, we can get that together better next year.
You know, we did go to the, you know, go to the well with the Bensonville Community Foundation a couple of times in the last year, so, you know. Next year, hopefully, we will prioritize this over some of the other asks.
Sure. We appreciate that. Thank you.
But we'll have more for you next month. Thank you.
Board DEI Committee?
Nothing to report. We haven't met, but I believe next month, we're going to meet with Mr. Rubio.
Board Finance Facilities Committee? Nothing to report.
Not at this time.
Board Policy Committee?
Nothing to report. We had a fantastic discussion last month, and we just approved a ton of great new policy. And we have some new policy coming up, hopefully, next month. You know, policy is good. Guys get excited about policy like me. There we go. That's my report.
For IAV, IASB delegate, we had our COSPA conference this past, what, Wednesday through Saturday? Went to a number of different sessions. For me, one that stood out was leadership, not allow the other attendees provide what stood out for them. It was a session on leadership, the superintendent, speaking about the importance and role of leadership, the superintendent, the board administrator. But it gave me a new view on, closer view of what our superintendent and administrators go through to deal with on a daily basis. So some of the stuff they report back to us, so I'll have more pointed questions going forward. Just into making the decision-making process that I, as far as what stood out for me. And to have a new, new final appreciation for you guys after this session.
Well, one of the last, when it called my attention, it was the unfinished leader. So that one is an endless, when, for instance, let's say that today, this coming year is going to be my last year as a board member. Probably I'm lying because I'm not going to finish my job. I'm going to do it a little bit here, a little bit there, and that is the purpose that unfinished leaders. And I see over here a lot of unfinished leaders, and I'm very grateful to share the field with you, gentlemen and ladies. Thank you.
Sylvia and I went to one of these breakout sessions with a gentleman speaker by the name of Dr. Simpson, and he was a principal of one of the lowest-performing schools in Atlanta. And he was the eighth principal at that school because every year, they would get a new principal, and he was the eighth one there, and he said that's where principals went to die. And so he decided that he was going to make it work. And they utilized a lot of social-emotional learning. He wanted, and restorative justice practices. He wanted to get a buy-in from everybody. He wanted to buy in from the students. He wanted to buy in from the teachers. He wanted to buy in from the custodians. He wanted just a buy-in from everybody in the school. And he was just such a dynamic speaker. You can see why everyone bought in. But we really were just so, just really enthralled with everything that he had to say. And we would love to get him to maybe come and speak to everybody, maybe not only District 100, but maybe District 2 and District 7 in the future because he really just was such a dynamic speaker. And we think it would, you know, probably help everybody in our district. So we've talked to James about it, and we're kind of, you know, in the works just because he was just so dynamic. So he, you know, we really were pumped when we left there. But there was also breakout sessions and general sessions about AI, and it was, it was a great conference.
Yeah, one of the, AI is here. It is what it is, kind of like social media. And it's, one of the things I recall about it is it ain't going away, so it might as well be incorporated as a tool as opposed to how do I stamp it out? There's no stamping out. And I'm sure you guys are hopefully thinking along the same lines.
How was the attendance this year? I know COSPA is a, is a bit of a growing collective. I know last year was, it was healthy, but I'm hoping this year, we've gotten, we've attracted more school boards to that, to there?
Yeah. You're finding a lot more, I would say, urban school boards with COSPA. And that makes the experiences of the various boards similar, apple or apples as far as ours. So that, and that dynamic, it proved very useful just with different ideas and shared experiences. There was a lot of thought, so it gives you an idea, you know. We have issues, but thank God, we don't have some of the issues of some of the other boards that I've heard in their experiences. And it's, man, it, you know, gas, what is this? What's the saying?
Gaslit.
The gas, I mean, the grass isn't always greener on the other side, so things to work on, but gosh, it could be worse from, from the stories that were shared and experiences. But the attendance is good in that, in that regard. So it does give us real, real thing to consider before I start going forward.
Fantastic. Thank you, sir.
Lynn?
Sure, just real...
Before, we have an upcoming DuPage Regional Meeting on March 5th at 6:00 PM. Also in your binder is a copy of the IASB 2024 Constitution and Position Statements. Also included is a newly published at a glance that explains the IASB process of how a resolution becomes a position statement throughout the course of a year. Lynn?
We had a meeting last Friday in the morning, really talking about...
We had a meeting last Friday in the morning, really talking about new possible legislation. Nothing was, was voted on, so it's still non-binding. More to come on that.
Next one?
We had a meeting February 13. It was a regular meeting, the operational meeting. And definitely, we see just the financial statements, the listing of the classrooms. And basically, it was just information. Nothing better.
Thank you. Next board meeting, Wednesday, March 20, 2024, at 7:00 PM. With a tentative Finance Facility Committee meeting scheduled prior to the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
Motion passed. Thank you and good night.
Aye.